Please line up so we can move forward quickly. Please.
Good evening. My name is Chris Hannah. I'm the president of the Women's Club of Fullerton, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about our club. Our mission is that we are dedicated to uniting women of all ages for community service, supporting charitable organizations, fostering friendship, and empowering women through learning about the community around us. Our T-shirts, our blue T-shirts say "Power Woman."
Women's Club of Fullerton.
And we have projects for everyone in the community to get involved with. I have never felt connected to my community as when I have joined the club about three years ago. We do so many projects for the community and also to educate ourselves. For instance, we went to our arts chair, organized something for us to go to the Gamble House to see that and learn about the stained glass. Also, we went to Anna Kappa Island, which is one of the Channel Islands. It's a national park. And we learned about the birds, the seagulls that nest there. We've been a club here in Fullerton for 111 years. We had a little speed bump where we were almost going to close, and then somebody from the south came here and moved her family here, and she decided she didn't want this club to die. And that's what she said. She said, "I'm from the south, and we don't let things die." That's what she said. And so she helped revive our club, and we've been growing ever since. We're over 100 members now. We're very proud of that. Our charity of the year this last year was the Women's Transitional Living Center, WTLC. We're going to be presenting a check to them in July. Also, we have many events coming up. One of them is the Natural Health Expo. It's on Saturday, June 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's free to the community. And also, the vendors do charity, so we're raising money for the Woodcrest Park Project, which I know you're familiar with, on Orange Thorpe, trying to get as many, some playground equipment and beautify that area. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We have the next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Norma Ames, and I am the outgoing president of the Women's Club of Fullerton for the past two years. And I just want to talk a little bit about the Love Fullerton program, the one that you just did. I had Chief Hughes and also Jay Williams came to our meeting and spoke about it, and we were just so inspired about the whole program. We immediately wanted to come involved. We do a lot of just helping in the community. Our motto is "To Make a Difference in People's Lives." And this was just a chance for the whole community and other organizations to come together and all do it together. We had a booth at the rally, 8:00 a.m. in the downtown Fullerton area, and passed out food to all the people that came in. We really got to know a lot of the community members that we had never met before, and also the other organizations, and see how we can actually work together to make a difference. And so we're really excited about that. And then also, just knowing how we can help each other with our individual activities so that I think it would really makes a huge difference in the community when we all reach one, to reach one, to help each other. We all have our own time, talents, and treasures, and no matter where you are in your life, you have something that you can give back. We do have a big event that's coming up in October, October 19th. It's going to be at the Mecklenburg. It's called the WCOF Rocktoberfest. And we want it to be a big, huge, community event where everybody can come. It's going to be a free event, but we're going to be raising, hopefully, over $10,000 or more for the Woodcrest Park Project, because we're really, that is one of our passions right now, to be able to revitalize that park for the under-advantaged area. So, and we also have our charity of the year that we're going to be voting on in June, so that'll be a part of it, too. But we want the whole community. It was, we were inspired by the Love Fullerton program. And so this event, we want the whole community to come out to really help with this whole thing. We're going to have a band. We're going to have fun. We're going to have food, activities for the kids, and just a really great event. So I just really thank you for giving us the opportunity to come here and speak.
Thank you for the positive things you're doing in our community.
Thank you.
We have the next speaker, please.
Hello, council. Hello, human beings. You know, Pastor Lee was right, a lot of things, and service and goodwill and, you know, wisdom and doing the right thing is really important when you lead a city, right? You all want to be up there, chose to be up there. So I'm really here right now just to say that we are facing a mountain of problems coming down on us. Not me, but us as human beings, you know, on this planet. The state, the sun, the chemicals, all kinds of things, massive. You know, people having autism, cancer, this, just growing, growing, growing. The reason is because we're out of balance with nature. We're out of balance with what's right and that works. And it's intense. It's really intense. I mean, you feel that sun out there. That's not a normal Fullerton sun of 10 years ago. Hasn't rained in a long time. It's an issue, you know? It's like, it's an issue. So I just encourage and invite you all to, when you make decisions, to think about that, to think about the future, to think about, you know, the people here that lived here in this place before the white man came. They used to make rules and decisions on seven generations. For seven generations, they thought ahead. How will we do this? Yeah, I just saw this. It blew me away, you know, fracking. Oh, we got to get gas. We got to get natural gas. We got to do this. There's big money in it, blah, 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 blah. You know what they do? They drill a well hundreds of feet down. Here in Fullerton, there's six of them that they're acidizing, which means they're pumping acid into it. Get a load of this. Hydrofluoric acid, 61,000 pounds, boom, into the ground and destroying the earth down there, and leaving those chemicals. Hydrofluoric acid, methanol, butane ethanol, hydrochloric acid, chloride, ammonium chloride, and it goes on and on, thousands, 50,000 pounds. And people don't know what this stuff does, you know? So once again, I just invite you all to think deeply, you know? These things that are on the surface, maybe laws are passed, there's some studies. No one knows what this is going to do. All of this stuff, the wireless stuff, the electromagnetic frequencies that are being pumped out of everything, you know? It's a really intense thing, you know? The way the country's going as well, think about it. You know, rules and laws being passed that are just in line with the KGB, you know, things that you think are bad. Nazism, you know, martial law, things of, you know, stuff like that. It just takes an earthquake, and this whole place is on fire. There's no water. Dan Hughes has his tank. It's intense. So, on love of the tension, all that, you know? You know what I'm talking about. So I just invite you to be well-quiety. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have the next speaker, please.
Hi, folks. My name is Stephen Baxter. I live at 917 North Ford Avenue. He wants you to be wise. I want you to be wise. I want to be wise. Last September, I was up here speaking about the cynical camping tickets issued to those in our community who have nothing, that are too poor to afford a roof over their head. And we voted out a homeless shelter. By "we," I mean you. And we cite human beings for falling asleep outside when we give them no place to go. At the time, Dan Hughes sat here, was questioned by Ms. Florrie, and he said, "What are we supposed to do? What are my men supposed to do?" They give them warnings. We try to find housing for them, and they refuse help. Well, I'm going to tell you a little story that happened since the last time I was here. And this is about someone named Karen, who's 65 years old, who just recently started receiving social security checks. And the first month she got a check, it was ripped off. The second month, I worked with J.D. DiCaprio, and him and this guy named Hector he rides around with from Social Services, found her a place. I was so happy. She goes there, she refuses. I was unhappy. I blamed her. They blamed her. Everyone blamed her. The following month, she was ripped off again. Didn't have enough money. Month after that, there was no place found. In May, those guys found her another place by the same owner. She goes, doesn't like it, comes back. She refused. They were angry with her. They blamed her. I blamed her. And then she was promptly arrested for warrants for no camping. Now, the only reason I got involved, I'd written her off just like everybody else, is because this guy who owned the place, and I won't name him, but I'll tell you all an email if you'd like to hear it, refused to give her her money back. Her head never touched a pillow, and he would not give her back $750 that she had deposited, even though she never spent a minute there, because she did give 30-day notice that she wasn't going. None of the people involved in finding this place tried to get her money back. I had to do it. I'm not a public servant. Why did I have to get it back? And when I picked up the check, you know what I found? A shithole, folks. It was disgusting. A guy in his underwear answered the door. And this is where you're going to put a 65-year-old woman? It's not their fault. They're not being obstinate. They want to live someplace decent. So don't pretend that they deserve these tickets, and they deserve these arrests, and they deserve to spend six days in jail. They don't. Some people do, but it's not them. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Jean Jackson, and I'm not from Fullerton. However, when my son was murdered by a police officer, shot in the back with a submachine gun, I started noticing other cities and their actions and their activities and what they're doing. And so, of course, I mean, I came here many times, speaking on many different issues about police misconduct. And the last time I was here, I spoke about A.J.'s arrest. And not speaking about A.J., but I just wanted to question, has anybody's... I mentioned this last time I was here. Has anybody further pursued a ticket or an arrest against a cameraman who shot and pushed other people? Not damn that much. Has anybody done anything about that? After all, Jordan Carroll was arrested and had to go to jail. And she was just responding back to being assaulted by a cameraman. So has anybody done anything about that? Your chief told me that there was a committee that reviewed those tapes. Didn't they review that woman? Didn't they see that woman also assaulting other people? She did do it. So I really think that you guys really should look into that. If you're going to be a fair government, come on now, let's be fair. And I also would like to touch upon Karen, the homeless woman. Again, I'm on social media, and so I see the misconduct in my city and in your city. And when I saw that the homeless woman was arrested for camping, it broke my heart again. It really broke my heart. Instead of arresting somebody or leaving a ticket, they kind of did her like they did A.J. She wasn't there. Her blanket was there. Her property was there. So they just put out a warrant for her and then went after her later. How just is that? But how just is it to, you know, that most of those people that are homeless are usually mentally ill? Don't you guys have some way of dealing with the mentally ill people? You know what terrifies me? Because my son has went through a very traumatic time this year, and he has been kind of unbalanced. And I've been terrified for him to be out on the street, afraid that he would get shot because of his conduct, or he would be put in jail. You guys need to know how to train your people to deal with the mentally ill and the homeless. And the police officers need to be monitored. You need to do some house cleaning and get rid of the people that have, that are bloodthirsty, the bloodthirsty cops, or the arrogant, cocky cops that want to do harm to other people because they wear a badge and they wear a gun.
Thank you.
This is speaker number nine, so if anybody else would like to speak, please come line up along the wall behind me.
Good evening, council. Barry Levinson, longtime resident and concerned citizen. Mayor Chafee, at the last meeting, May 20th, he opened the council meeting as follows. He welcomed Paul to the Fullerton council meeting. He went on to state, "Welcome," quote, "welcome here. You are our guests in our house, and we'd like to have you here, and you should know to be treated with respect," end quote. I believe you meant to say that you should know that you will be treated with respect. Let me continue. Let me take a moment to educate our mayor. Mayor, this is not your house, or the house of the other council members. You're the house of the city manager, the city attorney, or our police chief. Rather, I am informing you here tonight that this is the people of Fullerton's house. You, Mayor, are our guest for the period of time you were elected to serve us, the people of Fullerton. That period will be over at the end of this year. It is totally at our discretion, via the ballot box in November, if you wish to extend your guest status in our house or to graciously ask you to leave. The fact that you obviously do not know this is telling, and it shows in your attitude toward other council members, the public, and towards me. Your attempt on several occasions to shut me down at the May 20th council meeting was very troubling. After all, this very council granted me the right to collaborate on revising the sex offender ordinance issue. I was also assured directly by Mr. Phelps that I would be allowed on May 20th to have ample time to express my concerns and our reservations with the final draft document. Based on all of the above, your conduct toward me during the last council meeting was shocking, in its total disregard for the agreement you yourself made with me as a member of this council. It certainly did not demonstrate the respect you stated we can all expect here in this very chamber from you that you proclaimed in the opening comments on the meeting of May 20th. Thank you.
Council? I'm Ryan from The Union Press. I'm not really sure how to begin. Forget that nobody was ever disciplined for the beating of Kelly Thomas. Three of those officers still work for the Fullerton Police Department. Dan Hughes still has three of those cowards working there. Kevin Hampton, who knocked a man out on camera, and then was never disciplined or fired for that action, but went on to help beat Kelly Thomas to death, is now playing police football games like nothing happened. Did nothing happen? Kevin Craig, who was the supposed commanding officer that night, and he helped the other five officers kill Kelly Thomas. We all saw the video. Everybody saw the video. This is not something I'm making up. Okay? He rendered no aid and let Kelly bleed out on the ground, and then testified in court that none of these cops did anything wrong in that video, as did Corporal Rubio. But somehow, you were seen fit to receive an award as Supervisor of the Year, Dan? Supervisor of the Year. Let me see it again for a minute. Are you kidding me? We will not be forgiving nor forgetting these murderers as long as we live, but it seems you're willing to go on like nothing happened, like these men are innocent somehow, like these tapes, the tapes don't exist. Now they play football games, and they get awards, and they coach Little League. In the meantime, Kelly Thomas is still very dead, and no justice was ever given to him. Shame on you. Shame on Fullerton PD. Shame on Dan Hughes, who puts people in jail for spray painting instead of murder. Your department illegally arrested people for filming in areas not declared unlawful. Your officers knocked down handicapped people and injured them.
Sir, please address your comments to the council, not to Mr. Hughes.
I am talking to you, sir.
Thank you.
Please listen up, because this is pretty important.
Give him extra time now.
Can I have extra time? Have you interrupted me?
I'll give you 10 more seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Somehow, you know, you knock handicapped people down at the protest and chase wheelchair people around because one person spray painted an A six blocks away, and you feel somehow that justified? And then you send six undercover Fullerton cops in fake beers to Pasadena to arrest somebody for a minor misdemeanor while people get stabbed to death outside of clubs in Fullerton, while arsonists are on the loose? That's the priority? That disgust, if you disgust me, you chug. I'm talking to you now. If changes are made, someone else is going to get hurt or killed by this rogue force of men that think they are untouchable. Kevin Hampton, James Bladney, and Kevin Craig, Corporal Rubio, Dan Hughes, you're disgraces, and you should all step down now. The badge is no place for cowards. Now show some respect.
Hello. My name is Terry, and I live in Orange County. I have family that lives in Fullerton. And I've been here on several occasions since Kelly Thomas was killed, since my brother Michael Knight was killed in Downey. It's really disgusting how Fullerton has evolved over the last almost three years now that since Kelly has been killed. I mean, we've met some wonderful people, and A.J. is one of them. And I can't imagine, I'm just disgusted that your city spent how many thousands of dollars sending six cops to Pasadena to track them down? It's just disgusting. And then to go and arrest Karen, the homeless woman, for not having a place to sleep. Do you guys really know where all your money's going? I mean, is anybody looking at the budget? Is anybody keeping track of what Dan Hughes is doing? You know, when he wanted to be chief, you know, he put up all this smoke and mirrors to everybody and said he was going to make all the changes in the department, but look what's happening. It's not getting any better, I don't think. I mean, hopefully, none of the cops have killed anybody since Kelly Thomas. I mean, that's a good thing, but arresting homeless people and going after livestreamers after the protest? I was here that day in January, and they were targeting the livestreamers because, oh, God forbid, we don't want the public to really know what's going on behind the scenes. We don't want the public to know that we have an army of cops behind the building in riot gear, ready to come out. God forbid, the public would find that out. So I wonder how many thousands of dollars that day cost your city when the majority, in fact, everybody was very peaceful, was in peaceful protest? Yeah, and the camera lady, I saw what she did, pushed Jordan. And then who files charges? Not the camera lady didn't file charges against Jordan. Fullerton did. So how much did that cost you? Ask your city attorney. That cost you money to go after someone who is defending herself from a cameraman? And did you charge the cameraman with assault? Don't think so. You guys need to get a handle on this. Like Barry Levinson said, you're going to be saying goodbye pretty soon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, ladies and gentlemen watching on television. My name is Joe Briano. I'm the site administrator of the FullertonInformer.com, and I'm here to discuss several issues tonight once again. You know, when I walked in this room tonight, it was very, very comforting to hear a Christian pastor close a prayer in Jesus' name. I can't believe that the pastor of Omega Church in Fullerton can't even have the guts to do that, but here we are in a government meeting, and he has the guts to do it. And then I'm blessed with the fact that we have someone singing our national anthem, "Achapelago." That flag is red, white, and blue for a reason. People died barefoot in the snow and bled out under a blue sky to what we all take for granted that is being robbed of us by people that are out of control with their false sense of security with their government-public-employee-union contracts that think that they are beyond reproach. Well, I'm here to tell you that today's election day, and it may be a primary, but after every primary, there's a general election. And let's see what happens in the fall. I'm horrified to think of what goes on at these cocktail parties. I live up on the hill, and I hear the trash cans clank when the recycle truck comes through. I know what's going on. And a lot of people's consciences in this town are seared with a hot iron. And they think because they've got a lot of dough in the bank and they've got their pensions rolling in, they think they're just above everything. And let me tell you, I got news for all you people that think you're sitting pretty. Your kids are getting sterilized in the classrooms with the Wi-Fi systems and these wireless devices, and you can go into denial on that all you want. But another thing I'm here to tell you is the following. We are in big trouble on a variety of fronts, and the police state is marching on with or without your consent. And what is happening in this city is nothing more than a dog and pony show. We've got a lot of good PR and a lot of big money behind it, but the bottom line is the root of the problem is very deep, and it has not been rooted out. And we have people that are in complete and total denial that worship the establishment. I decided to take my son to Polly's, my 11-year-old son, for some breakfast on a Saturday morning last week, and had the privilege of sitting adjacent to a table with an off-duty Fullerton police officer, discussing what happened to Kelly Thomas. And my son listened to the whole exchange. And what happened to Kelly Thomas, as described by this Fullerton police officer, was that he had a heart attack during the course of resisting arrest. Now, I'm going to tell you something. I can tell you right now that there are people in Las Vegas hotel rooms that go through far more strenuous and stressful circumstances, doing things that limits of debauchery that know no end, that survive that. What happened to Kelly Thomas did not mean he died of a heart attack from resisting arrest. He was murdered at the hands of several out-of-control police officers, and several of which are still on duty. And the journalists go to jail, and they're going to always go to the news gal. We've got problems. The FullertonInformer.com. Thank you.
Good evening, Fullerton City Council and audience. My name is Diane Hickey, and I'm a resident of Fullerton. My purpose tonight is to comment on aspects of wireless radiation relative to the proposed Richmond Park cell tower installation. On February 24th, 2014, Doctors Paul and Dart made individual presentations on the biological and health effect of microwave electromagnetic frequency, EMF, to the Oregon House of Representative Committee on Healthcare. Dr. Paul's Professor Emeritus of Biochemistry and Basic Medical Science, Washington State University, and Dr. Dart is the medical doctor practicing in Eugene, Oregon. Starting with Dr. Paul's presentation, he states that EMF is known to cause oxidative distress, single and double strand breaks in cellular DNA, cancer, male and female infertility, loss of melatonin, consequence sleep disruption. Dr. Paul presents evidence that EMF is linked to the growing rate of autism. If autism is caused by EMF exposure to the brain, then one would predict that hyperactivity of the main L-type, the GCC, in the brain will cause autism. We know that this is true. Dr. Paul later concludes there is no question that this thing, EMF, is causing autism. Second, to address the Oregon Committee on Health, Dr. Dart presents numerous studies examining health effects and proximity to cell towers. Among these are a study in Leónora, Spain, 2001. The study showed distance from cell tower and sleep disturbance, depression, poor concentration, and dizziness. Significant increases with people closer to the cell tower. Itania, Israel, 97 to 98. Findings overall for risk of cancer were 4.15 times higher than the town as a whole. For men, the cancer rate was 1.4 times higher. For women, the rate was 10.5 times higher. Austria, 84 to 87. In the highest exposure category, breast cancer risk was 23 times higher. Brain cancer was 121 times higher. Brazil, 2011. Analysis of this study showed that the cancer death rate was significantly elevated at proximities closer than 500 meters to a cellphone tower. For each study, Dr. Paul makes a comparison between EMF emissions exposures tolerated by other countries versus the emissions allowed by the U.S. FCC guidelines, as I tried to describe to you in the last council meeting. It is also noted that in Europe, they are removing Wi-Fi from public spaces. Europe is moving in the opposite direction of the United States. I am taking the liberty of sending you links to this presentation so that you may listen to it in its entirety and at your convenience. Thank you for your kind attention to this matter.
Thank you, ma'am. We have the next speaker, please. What speaker are we on at this point? No, you can speak once, sir. Only once. You can't come back a second time. You can come back the next meeting. We'll hear you then. We have the next speaker, please.
This is something. First of all, I guess I'd like to comment on Director Hoppy's engineering sheet here to my right. I'm trying to lighten up the meeting a little bit. Today, I was obligated to call the re-debatment program, which exists at... Today, I was obligated to call the re-debatment program, which exists at the Fullerton Fire Department, to report the area on the east side of Euclid at Rose Trans extending for about 100 yards in both directions. That's the former side of the landslide, the lawsuit that we unfortunately lost. The last time I was here and spoke about that subject, I was promised grass. Well, it never came. What came were weeds. And the weeds are two or three feet high. They've died and the hill is covered. To me, that's a fire hazard. So I live in that area with a water shortage. I'd like to see the weeds gotten rid of. Secondly, I previously bypassed the southeast corner of 91 Freeway and Harden. And according to what I've learned, and I believe the mayor, that's the proposed site for the homeless. And I want to comment that I think it's an excellent choice. The freeway's on one side, investiture's on the other, and two major boulevards with these buses on one of them is the other. I would also suggest, after the comments heard here this evening concerning homeless refusing to go into buildings, some of them don't like rules and regulations. They want to be outside. I would propose that some grass areas be left open for them to put their tents up with restrooms and so forth. The real reason I'm here is I'm supposed to push a button on my knee and it's magically going to appear and I don't know where to begin. Oh, where the keyboard? Unfortunately, my daughter, who's been living in Portland, Oregon for the past seven or eight years, insisted that I come up and I missed the ceremony at the cemetery this Memorial Weekend. And I've been attending it every year and have had my picture taken with someone the most outstanding officers in the military. But while I was there, we visited their market and it's an amazing place. I only wish ours was half that nice. But while I was there, I saw this, my daughter pointed this device out to me. I don't know how well you can see it, I can't see it very well from here, but that's an outdoor restroom. There's no defeat, there are no homeless there.
We'll give you one more minute because you were having trouble with your electronics there.
And this is what it looks from the backside and this is a mural or a depiction on the front door so you can stand there and read it while you're waiting. And this is the interior and it looks nicer than that picture, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you so much for hearing me. Justice for Kelly Thomas. Sleep is a human right. It's a human right to sleep. Every human needs to sleep. You have all slept every single night of your lives except for a few uncomfortable nights in college. And so you all know the value of sleep because after a long night of no sleep, a person gets kind of loopy. After two nights of sleep, they get really loopy and after three or five or 10, they might die. So by your terrorist law enforcement department issuing citations to the unhoused people in the city of Fullerton, you might potentially be committing murder against them. Not that your cops would ever murder a homeless person. You need to fire the officers that killed Kelly Thomas, all of the officers that killed Kelly Thomas. And you need to put cameras on your officers and give some accountability for the people that are paying their salaries. Reduce your law enforcement budget, increase your budget for taking care of homeless people in the city of Fullerton. There are clearly people around that don't have a place to live and they've chosen Fullerton as their outdoor living space and you need to deal with them and love them as citizens of your city. Make it so that food is available for them. A way you can do that is providing public spaces and public water to make community gardens available to be tended by volunteers, perhaps even homeless volunteers, and they can have something to do. It keeps them out of trouble and it keeps them fed with healthy, organic, non-genetically-modified food. I'd also like for you to provide better education for these people that you obviously seem to have a problem with. Maybe make like a motorhome or a bus with some books that can come visit them where you know they hang out, at the bus depot where they murdered Kelly Thomas. Bring some books down there to teach them some things about life and let them live like people. And those bathrooms, I've seen the bathrooms in Portland and in San Francisco and Los Angeles and they're few and far between and there need to be more of them and certainly there need to be more of them here. And also shower access as well. I've heard a lot of people complaining about smelly homeless people, but if a homeless person is smelly and has no home and has nowhere to take a shower, where will you think they're gonna take a shower? So those little bathrooms, you could put a shower in there too and then they'd have a way to clean themselves. It's ridiculous the way you treat these people. Thanks.
Hello. My name is Patty Beers. Tomorrow, I'm going to pre-child with 10 other people, now 11, or nine other people, now 10 other people. I'm going to child, though I've committed no crime. Crimes have victims. What I did was report the news. There is no victim in livestreaming. This man here, this gentleman here is livestreaming. I don't know if you're also livestreaming, but livestreaming is not a crime. What livestreaming is, is doing a live broadcast through a cellphone or another small device that automatically uploads onto a server. People can watch at home, on their computer, they can watch on their smartphone or other device. This is what livestream is. Livestream is unedited truth. It is the purest form of reporting news. People who are livestreaming, reporting the news should not be arrested for telling the truth. The lady from CBS pushed Jordan. She assaulted Jordan on January 18th. On January 18th, there was a very large man, maybe, I don't know how tall, I can't reach that high, from ABC News. He grabbed me by the shoulder and pushed me. This man assaulted me, that man assaulted Jordan Carroll. What a coincidence that two livestreamers were assaulted by people from the mainstream media. And not arrested. When if I chose to defend myself the way my father taught me to, would I have gone to jail for assault? I'm facing trial and 11 other people are facing trial, though no crime has been committed. What a shame. It's Fullerton such a rich city that you can afford to put people to child who have committed no crime? I looked up crime statistics in the city. There is crime in the city, there are rapes in the city, there are murders in the city, there are cops who commit murder and get away with it in the city. There is vandalism, there is arson, there is burglary, there are cars being stolen. What a shame that your city is so rich that you can prosecute people who have committed no crime. You're disgusting.
Yes, Mr. Package.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tony Package and I, now, this month, I've been here 10 years now in Fullerton. This will be short. Can't promise you it'll always be short. At the last meeting, I requested an update on a homeless shelter. It was indicated by the mayor and city manager that a site was selected, purchased. Is there any update? Did I miss something in the paper? That's been pretty big news. And when will we get specifics on the contents of the shelter? And number two, please pull item number three and seven, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Package. Are there any more speakers? See, no more, but to close the public comments and move on to the next item on our agenda. We have a special request regarding the Love Fullerton to make that part of our staff communication to Mr. Hughes, I'm sorry, Chief Hughes, which is your take over.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan Hughes, your police chief. On May 17th, we obviously had a thing called Love Fullerton, but we had about 2,300 people show up to volunteer assist various in our community. And so we had over 23 churches that were involved, a number of nonprofit organizations, and many people worked on, not only the seed properties, but also our parks, our schools. And so we were asked last council meeting to provide a presentation. I'll be showing you a quick video and then Jay Blaim, who's a pastor from EB Free, will come up and give some other details.
So Love Fullerton really grew out of a dream to see this city come together. Faith community, city government, local businesses, service organizations, our public schools, all our local residents. And then our park recreation team came together. City maintenance crew, and so many other nonprofit organizations, all blessed this city.
Good morning, Fullerton! How you doing?
You know, Love Fullerton was a conversation, a conversation about what could happen if all of us here in our community work together to really just help our neighbors. Seeing everybody, the diverse crowd from all different backgrounds, come together on one day and really, and work hard together for the betterment of our city. So that conversation led to...
All right, hold on. There's a double topic link in the picture, everybody! Wait! Let them know your full name, here you are!
Our local businesses, we have over 400 posters in different businesses throughout our city. And then over 400 yards, sort of different front yards of different homes in our city. A lot are created. And on this particular day, we had over 25 churches that I know of that came together to bless our city, to work together. In the scriptures, the people who got our call to seek the favor and the blessing of the city in which they live, so it was our great joy to do that this morning. We actually had about 50 young ladies from the National Guard, Sunburst, UDN. We were all over the city, working with 15 schools. We were in 12 city parks and local trails. We had, from a blood drive that was over at EB Free where we gathered 70 pints of blood. We built a home that's gonna be delivered to Mexico in the parking structure. Probably 70 folks who were here at the police department detailing, I believe, 20 cars. We had a number of projects that were focused on the homeless here in this community. Coast to Coast Foundation, another group of folks that just took them throughout the city. We went with food and something to drink and really just the intent to come and have conversation.
We have a little business called Heroes that's gonna be supplying lunch today at Hillcrest Park.
So when the work was all done, the crowd began to gather over at Hillcrest Park for our barbecue compliments of Jack Franklin from Heroes. And what a great time we had hanging out in the park. And it just showed the need for our city to gather together and just have fun. There was, it was just a completely diverse crowd, so people stood in lines and they had fun talking and just telling their stories of the work that they did throughout the city. The American Karate Academy across the street from the park came and entertained the crowd. For me, Love Fullerton isn't just about this day. It really is about what could happen throughout our city in the other 364 days of the year. Feel free to please check out our website, lovefullerton.org. And throughout the year, we'll have different opportunities that you can help serve this city, help serve your neighbors, help improve the quality of life as great, great community. And so we're excited that you're part of it. We're excited that as we continue, we can build year after year, that this is only getting larger and we're only getting out the bigger and better things for this great city. Come to lovefullerton.org and you'll find a way that you can get involved and make a difference. Maybe that's with the homeless, maybe that's mentoring some of our young students, maybe that's working with the senior adult in a boarding care home in the city. There are hundreds of ways that you can be involved and we want to help facilitate that because we think a vital, vibrant community makes for a vital, vibrant city. So we just want to thank you so much for being a part of it. We are excited as we prepare for next year and we would love for you to be a part of that as well. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you for indulging us and letting us show you a little bit of the highlights of Love Fullerton. From my perspective, it was a phenomenal day. It was exciting in many ways. It exceeded most of my expectations and it was a great, it was a great launch for us. If you could indulge me, I wrote down some of the highlights, so I'd like to share those. And then we've been hearing lots of stories and I brought one of the, one of the great stories is standing next to me and I'm gonna let Christine share as soon as I go. But let me tell you a little bit about what we did already. There were 400 yards signs sprung all over the city. I'm sure some of you saw those. There were 400 local businesses that supported the cause by putting the posters in our windows. We passed out 8,000 postcards. There were 56,000 flyers that were sent home through our school district to all our kids and their families. 20 ladies served brunch for some of the vulnerable women that called WTLC Home. They served a Mother's Day brunch and loved on them and their kids. We renovated and restored 16 benches at Hillcrest Park. Fullerton High School got a landscape renovation on their campus that was worth up and above 20 grand. And we gave away about 2,000 I Love Fullerton t-shirts, so hopefully we'll be able to see some of those appear throughout our city. We delivered 100 yards of mulch to schools and parks and just want to help put in perspective about how much 100 yards of mulch is. If you've seen the dump trucks that, you know, drive by the streets, whatever, well, one dump truck has about 10 yards of mulch in it, so times 10 is the amount of mulch. And then when you think about how many wheelbarrows that involves and how many individuals it was, kids and moms and dads that were helping to spread that mulch, you get the picture of what that was involved with. We had 40 board and care homes that were cared for and visited by our neighbors. We had approximately 2,300 volunteers that came and offered about, close to 7,000 hours of volunteer work. It spread out over 62 different projects. We were working in eight local shelters. We spread out 50 gallons of paint. 26 folks attended our first foster adoption workshop. As I mentioned earlier, we reached out to 15 schools, 70 pints of blood was donated, 20,000 deals was packaged in the Maple neighborhood and it will be on its way to the Dominican Republic. So some of our own kids in need get a chance to bless other people far away. We built one home that's ready to be transported to Mexico to give to a family. We had 10 city parks that were loved on. We had 65 ladies from local shelters, all over through local shelters, that were treated to a day of pampering with a swab, with a full swab. 45 folks visited many of the homeless in our city and, as I mentioned earlier, the intent was to go with dislove and conversation and care. Five homes that had been tagged by the city were actually offered care and support. One of them, I got a message from one of the workers of the city like two days after the event and they said, "Oh, is there any way we could get some more people to come? We have a 90-year-old lady that could use some help at her home." And crazy, but I had received a message from a church in Saddleback who said, "We're gonna be in the city of Fullerton this particular Sunday. Is there anything that you guys could put to work in?" So we worked it out and these kids, actually a bunch of junior highs invaded this home and offered a lot of love to this lady to help get her home in a little better condition. That was a fun story. We served 250 breakfasts to folks at the car show, but really it wasn't about the car show, it was a... show, but really it wasn't about the car show, it was about saying thanks to an organization that chooses to bless many of the needy folks in our own community and offers kids some programs that wouldn't be available to them or their families just through the generosity of its donors. We had, we built, we put together eighty blankets for kids that will be going to a camp this summer that are in the foster care system. Lastly, we had fifty thousand dollars that was given to us by our sponsors to help make this day happen. But as I said, maybe, maybe the best things are some of the stories that are beginning to come out. I want to introduce you to Christine, and she was, she's going to tell you a little bit of her experience, what she was involved with.
Actually, I am a resident of Fullerton. I've been here for twelve years, and I found myself in the principal's office back in February with some concerns about our campus. We have some beautiful mosaic memorial gardens that have been vandalized, and each day seeing them, it just sort of...
There's six of them. Metal and malicious.
That's the arresting.
Because you would have ran if he didn't have the beard.
Most reason for the beard.
Yeah, six of them, and they're all dressed like, he had the beard and they're dressed like metal and malicious.
Undercover on this, or what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably part of the obfuscation.
We're outside currently. They still got some things going on internally.
There was five of us there for a kid, you know, for a school board thing, for a kid in autism, and we did not try to do it for a kid.
You don't have to share some of your speaking skills.
I think everything looked really good. It was really good. You want to talk a little bit?
You still streaming?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I can't, I got one hand. Just going to try to get this. You were...
Eleven viewers?
Yeah, really, yeah.
Oh, no, a hundred and eleven.
Yeah, there you go.
Cool. You got a lighter?
No, man, I ain't got no fire.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, interesting, you know...
I did do it all right.
Yeah, it's really good.
I got rattled up there, though. You rattled me twice. You want to take a break until the agenda item might be half hour away?
The agenda item is the...
When we're going to talk about specifically the case of them arresting live streamers.
Okay, that's going to be an actual agenda item.
That's an agenda item. From what I know, Agenda Nine.
I was actually, you know, my footage is actually both, uh...
What's that? Yeah, a little bit, little bit. That's Lucas, he's in League Press. You see that mammoth on there? That's great. You see the Rye while one?
Yeah, yeah, the hat, the same one, the same hat.
The Cory and Emily?
Oh, they're there.
Yeah, we are still...
Half a million dollars about, I was about to say.
Yeah.
My last line.
Yeah?
I got you and Max a video.
Yeah, yeah, send them, send them up. We have an agenda item too, you know, tonight. They're actually going to let us talk about them arresting live streamers, so it might get interesting. So Agenda Nine, I think, tonight around three, I don't know. It doesn't look like there's that many people. Yeah, tonight. Yeah, we got an actual agenda to speak, so. It should be, I don't know, soon. AJ, when's your, when do we go in for the agenda item?
I have nightmares about the, what's that like, no, what's that, 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 that still whiteness?
Back up and get a bigger crowd shot. Now you can talk, dude.
Who's watching right now?
I don't know.
I see, I see, I did. I see their little things.
See if they're, you know, I'm wondering if this thing gets in the way of the voice a little bit. I don't know where the microphone is, but I heard there were some problems with sound earlier, but I put it back in the cave when I came out here.
Showtime?
Yeah.
Want to take it over?
Yeah.
I'll do it for me. I can bring it up there when I knock.
Not believe. I know, I killed her butt. Max, you don't need to see a drink after this, you killed her butt.
Public comments.
AJ, I'm Jay. Yeah, I know stuff, I know it's hard to, it's hard to find some, so I'm confident that some good things are going to come.
I'm going to tell you, I'm telling you.
I know.
You should get her off that bench. It's like the whole community is concerned. Help me. I'm going to, I'm going to find your church, I'm going to, if you can sit on the front or something.
All right, yeah, well, I'll be happy to sit down.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
I just wish you were any comments or communications. Councilman Gordon. Passing, Councilman Richard.
I just want to let you know that I attended along with Mayor Protem Seaborn and our Director of Public Works, Don Hoppe, the Association of California Cities Infrastructure Conference last Thursday, and if anyone has a chance to learn more about Mayor Greg Ballard of Indianapolis, Indiana, really inspirational story about how he has turned Indianapolis around, and, and so I would encourage you to do that. I would also encourage you, you may have seen signs around town about fireworks, and I would encourage you to get ready to go out and buy safe and sane fireworks. When you do, you support local nonprofits throughout the city and have a lot of fun in the process. And then I also want to say how proud I am of our police chief, Dan Hughes, and our police department. Chief Hughes, I want you to know how much we appreciate your leadership. What I appreciate most is that your department is willing to look inside itself and make change when change is necessary, and that your number one desire is to serve this community well, so I want to thank you for that.
Mayor Protem Seaborn, any comments?
Just a quick happy birthday to my daughter.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go to our consent calendar, and which items will be pulled? Three and seven. Are there, are there any others that would be, anyone wants to pull? All right, well, like a motion on the rest, move the balance?
Second.
Hey, what's up?
Those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, carries unanimously. Let's move on to number three.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know who asked to add to that. Okay, Mr. Package, you made your request.
I'll get a ride, I'll get a ride.
Just for your concerns.
I'll get freeway to give me a ride to your house.
My concerns are, I drove the Orange Torp, I rode today, and yes, it needs help, but there are lot more streets, like Euclid and Harbor to Imperial that come to mind. Now, my question is, is this stretch of Orange Torp planned for, for new water pipes? Is that something that's being done at the same time?
Mr. Hoppe, could you comment on that, please?
Sure. The reason we picked this particular segment of Orange Torp is because this is part of the, what was the redevelopment areas, and it was eligible to use the successor agency funding for that. Most of the portions of Euclid were not part of that, and I agree there are certainly other parts. There's lots of our trail streets in the city you can pick to repair. We picked five, they were all done in a rush, that's why they're here for you tonight to have the order before the end of the fiscal year so that we can make the eligible for this successor agency funding. And no, we are not going to replace the water main in any of the areas that are being rebuilt as part of the seven or the six packages tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hoppe. Any further questions, Mr. Package?
That's, that answers my question.
Is there the other member of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, number back to council, any concerns of council?
None.
It's been moved by Councilman Florrie, is there a second?
A second.
Where will you, Seaborn has seconded it. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. Let's move on to item seven.
Give it to me. Sorry, since state, this has to do with the, your Belinda. And yes, I go to Cal State Fullerton all the time, and that stretch of highway is really pretty bad, but, but I also note that State College has, has, we have some plans to put some construction there and use water. So is this being merged together? Are, are we going to be, is this going to be one project merged together, or is it going to be separate projects?
Mr. Hoppe?
Those are separate projects. This is just a standalone street reconstruction, and again, it was part of successor agency funds. I believe the portion you're talking about is going up State College and then East on your Belinda towards Associated, those will be standalone projects, and those will be part of the accelerated OCSD front line replacement, and it may include a water main replacement. We'll have to analyze that, but the intended to do that when State College is actually closed for the Great Separation Project further south.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoppe. Any other member of the public has comment on this item? I'll bring back to council. Any comments? If not, a motion would be in order.
Move the item.
Moved and seconded, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. We're now moving on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. And we have a staff report on item eight.
There are several departments are going to weigh in. This is a follow-up study session in the second year, the two-year budget, and Ms. James is going to walk us through the, the first part of the presentation, and then Mr. Hoppe and Mr. Curial, as we focus and predict on the CIP projects that are running in some of the parks. Julia?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. As we enter the second year of our two-year budget, we are proposing changes, increases to the budget of roughly ten point seven million dollars. As you'll see, most of those are attributable to the capital improvement plan, and we will be discussing those changes tonight. We are taking the budget from one hundred and sixty-three million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand to one hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty thousand. Again, being the second year of a two-year budget, we tried to keep the amendments to a minimum. There were some minor tweaks to the operating budget, but again, most of them were to the CIP. Our focus this year was to continue our efforts to maintain and grow our reserve balances and to focus our CIP increases on the street and water system repairs, as those are the most needed. We're also continuing with this budget with our other funding and revenue initiatives that were adopted last year. Again, as we mentioned in the budget study session last month, staff maintains a five-year forecast of our general funds, and that helps us to identify any impacts that any budget changes have to our reserves and our future budgets. We do anticipate for the next few years continuing to dip into reserves a little bit to balance the budget until the economy is well on its way to recovery. We still anticipate that there are a few more years left before the economy will start to really grow. And at that point, we anticipate being able to balance our general funds. We have two proposed fund transfers from general fund reserves in the fourteen-fifteen budget. One million of that is to the liability insurance fund. As you will recall, in last year, we presented a proposed fund deficit in the insurance reserve fund of roughly ten million, and that was due to, in large part, to some settlements that had gone out. We have issued in the last year judgment obligation bonds in the amount of seven million. We also made a two million dollar transfer from the workers' comp fund, and this leaves us with a projected deficit of about a million dollars. We feel that once we close that gap with a transfer from general fund reserves, we should be able to start building those reserves again with next year's budget. We're also asking for a two hundred thousand dollar increase to the information technology fund. We have poured every bit that we have into this network and phone upgrade. As you recall, we also sought some lease financing, and we are well underway with that project. We are hoping that this will be all we need to shore it up, and again, with that allocation as with the liability insurance fund, go forward in future years with being able to grow those reserves again. The summary of proposed amendments are roughly five point two million citywide in revenue increases, and again, that is almost entirely attributable to the CIP fund. The appropriation increases, as I mentioned previously, are roughly ten point seven million, of which nine point six million is to the CIP, and a little over a million is in non-CIP To break down the non-CIP increases, we have roughly a hundred and forty thousand in professional services, sixty thousand is for the second year of our two-year PD independent review. We have on-call plan check services of twenty thousand for as-needed services in the event that we have additional projects that come through. We have a sixty thousand dollar increase to our custodial contract service next year. As I mentioned in the budget workshop, our CNG operation is going much better than we originally anticipated when we first put the budget together, so we need to increase that budget as well. Our debt service on the new phone lease was anticipated at a lower debt service payment than what, what we ended up with, so we're increasing that by a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then we also have roughly four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand in new vehicles, equipment, and other software purchases next year. As you know, the Orange County, uh, Orange County is in the process of upgrading its eight hundred megahertz communication system for police and fire over the next few years. We do have a sixty-three thousand dollar payment due then this year. Part of that is for fire, and part of it is for police. We are also proposing a business registration area remodel to make it more customer-friendly and business-oriented. And then we have total changes in FTEs of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, of which I will discuss on the next slide. And then the remainder is a net budget reduction of roughly sixty thousand in allocations. As I mentioned, we have roughly seventeen thousand dollars increase in personnel costs in the next fiscal year. I do want to mention that a member of the audience contacted me earlier this afternoon and asked what the total new number of, by department of the personnel costs would be in next year's budget. If we take the total that is in the adopted budget for twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen, and add seventeen thousand to that total, that is the new total. So we, we kept the, the total to a very minimum. You will see that we are increasing FTEs by four point two, but most of those positions are, are already in place, they're just working as non-regulars or part-time people, and we're only increasing their hours a little bit to make them full-time. The budget impacts in most of those positions were so minimal that we felt that the departments could absorb those costs in the next fiscal year so that we wouldn't have to increase the budget. The police officer position is really truly the one position that's not filled right now. We are anticipating several retirements in the police department in this next fiscal year, and we're hoping by, by those folks at the top step going out and hiring, at the bottom step coming in, that we'll have sufficient savings that we can hire another police officer without actually allocating new money for this next fiscal year. And I will be in the, as requested of me by... The police officer position is really truly the one position that's not filled right now. We are anticipating several retirements in the police department in this next fiscal year. And we're hoping by, by those folks at the top step going out and hiring at the bottom step coming in, that we'll have sufficient savings that we can hire another police officer without actually allocating new money for this next fiscal year. And I will be in the, as requested of me by this resident this afternoon, I will be including a schedule in the adopted budget that does show the breakdown of salary benefits, operating budget, and capital outlay, I just did not include it in this package this evening. Parts of recreation fees are the only updates for the fees this next year. They have two fee proposals which have already been approved by the Parks and Rec Commission. That's the addition of a food vendor fee for the fishing derby of fifty-five dollars plus ten percent of gross sales. And then they are also increasing by one dollar the hourly staff fee charged from twenty-one dollars to twenty-two dollars as a result of the increasing minimum wage effective July one. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hoppy for the CIP.
Good evening, thank you very much for having me here. This is a little bit of an abbreviated presentation from what you saw at the workshop last month. So some of these will look fairly familiar to you, but a lot of the audience was not there, so it'll be fresh for them. The first one is the fire department, the gender separation accommodations. Because we're able to accomplish some of them with just minor interior modifications, the fire department took care of gender separation in stations three, four, and five. The two hundred thousand dollars there is for station one headquarters and for station two, which will require much more expensive modifications in order to accommodate them. All of these are, the next three projects all require successor agency funding, which currently is not funded. But the, I've been told that we believe that we will be able to get these funds next year, or this coming fiscal year. The asphalt repair is really for almost all of the stations, they're all getting to be pretty bad shape. It's either actually a combination of concrete and asphalt repairs. And the last one is the fire station replacement, that's what you saw last time. We do have an updated photo which looks a lot better than the one that you saw before. This is the site that's in Brea Canyon. We, again, as I mentioned, can build something like this at, say, station two, which is in a fairly commercial area, for around four hundred thousand dollars per location, including the utilities, the buildings, as you see it there. So this is a fairly cost-effective alternative to what we built for station six on Rosecrans, which was around three million dollars probably six or seven years ago. Again, it's a prefabricated building with prefabricated housing for both the firemen and the equipment. And it could be moved if you had to, much less expense obviously than tearing down a building. So if we do choose to go this way, we can reuse them. Next is, I'm sorry, Mr. Felso, do you want to talk about the college right now, or do you want to wait?
Yeah, it's probably a good time to mention that we are in active conversations with Cal State Fullerton and Ketchum University on the, on the properties on the north side of Cal State Fullerton. We have meetings scheduled next week to explore the possibility, but it looks very likely that the local administration has now control over the properties. And they are interested in discussing a long-term lease with the city. And Ketchum University, of course, you know, has announced plans to stay, but that was a great need to grow and are very interested in the, in working with us to fund all or part of the station five renovations, looking towards that vacant property on the, your, the side. So those are looking very positive, and we wouldn't make any moves without, obviously, council has a lot to consider with that, but those, those conversations are ongoing.
Thank you, sir. The next few projects are basically community development related, they are the lead agencies for these. I did include the, the Bike Boulevard for Wilshire because we are actually in the middle of interviewing consultants to do final selection for the preliminary design. I know that Mark Miller is part of the group that's been interviewing them, so hopefully we'll have something back to council beginning of fiscal year awarding the contract for that. The College Town Connector, as you'll recall, is the potential streetcar, and this is here as a placeholder for OCTA competitive funding, and it has to be in our CIP in order to be eligible to make that application, again, that's why it's there. And the next one is funding to replace the decade-old permit system that they have up in community development. It's the tide mark system, which is no longer provided nor supported by the original software company. Bass and Sherry Road, just a minor increase because of additional fund, or additional costs associated with that project. The arterial street reconstruction projects, that's the bump that was basically awarded as part of the contracts tonight. So I am mentioning here, although it's kind of right on the border between last year and this year, all the work will take place in the next fiscal year, but you just awarded them tonight. And the residential streets, you see there's a little bit of increase, that's because the money that was gonna go to arterial streets, we took that out because of the four point three million dollars in successor, and we're gonna put that into the residential streets for next year and increase the funding for that. And part of that's to match the sewer and water main projects that continue to happen. Alley reconstruction, once again, we lost some of the funding that was originally allocated for that, so that's just the least amount that's currently available. Sewer system, that's the State College, your Belinda, that's sort of what Mr. Package talked about earlier. This is the accelerated OCSD project, this would be our, a minimum amount of funding necessary for staff coordination of a multimillion dollar project. That's why we added that there, because it was not part of the original budget. Storm grade system, a hundred forty-two thousand dollars in additional OCTA competitive funding to put the stream on the catch basins, you've probably seen it around town, to keep the leaves out during the dry areas, dry periods, so you don't end up with a lot of material in the catch basins in the rains, so it doesn't end up in the ocean and the rivers. And then the water system, that was amended once again because we went to Pago versus Bonding for those improvements. And again, it'll be ratcheting up with the traditional year, and we'll, we'll match that fairly soon. This is a little bit different than what you saw last time. This shows the various projects that will be included in the coming fourteen fifteen budget year. I did include some of the other projects that are, that are part of this year, such as, if I can get it. This is the sewer line project that's currently just starting construction out by Bask Yard. So if you wanna go to the west, try and avoid Commonwealth, it'll be down to one lane in each direction. And during commute time, it'll be a little bit heavy traffic. And that's where we are replacing the storm grade line, replacing the sewer main, I'm sorry, the sewer main and the sewer manholes. And we'll be reconstructing the street from Bask all the way back to Euclid. These are various water projects that are not part of the water main replacements, things like Laguna, the pumps for Laguna pump station, some of the tank farm coatings. These are just large projects that are not, are not part of water main, but are part of the water system upgrades as part of the rate increases. And because it's such a huge project, we did include Raymond and State College as a reminder, because for the next three years, we'll be living with those two projects. Next are the, just a few minor changes, we applied for competitive grants for FAA AIP project funding for the tax relights. We did not get that, so we are reviewing out that funding. The next one, as you recall, is a combination of facility capital reserve fund and part dwelling for unanticipated maintenance costs of our various facilities throughout the city. That's there sort of as a cushion to spend money against if we have to, because maybe an HVAC system breaks down that wasn't scheduled to be replaced. If we don't spend it, it'll be reallocated next year. So you'll probably see very similar dollar amounts the next coming years. The last one on there is a twenty-five thousand dollar, just a preliminary potential funding to look at creating a electrical power company for the City Fullerton. That was a recommendation from the ERM C. Once again, the CIRC, Citizens Infrastructure Review Committee was not totally enamored with the idea. They weren't necessarily a hundred percent opposed, they just didn't understand exactly what it means. I'm not sure we, we know what it means, but the idea is to look at whether or not we could create something similar to Anaheim where they provide all the electricity to the residents. It's there.
So, Mr. Hoppy, is there an official committee recommendation to do this? I mean, how?
It was forwarded by the Energy and Resource Management Committee. It went to CIRC as part of review of the update of the CIP, and CIRC was not a hundred, CIRC did not specifically support this particular project. They weren't sure how we would fund the type of monies it would take to acquire all of the infrastructure that Edison currently owns and then begin operating an electrical system throughout the city.
And then maintain it.
There's, it's a huge one, yes. You'd have to buy the trucks, you'd have, I mean, yeah, it's, it's a phenomenal expense in order to do that. But based upon the recommendation from the ERM C, we are presenting it to council for your consideration. You can either vote to include it in next year's budget, or you can simply say we're not, we're not interested. We didn't really talk about it at the workshop very much, but it was there, I just, I probably didn't spend enough time talking about it. I apologize for that.
I, I don't think I would be supportive of that at this time, not this year.
And I have a question, Mr. Mayor too, perhaps, of Mr. Hoppy or city manager. I'm a little concerned that the action an advisory group to the council can insert in, in something ready for our approval of such a policy magnitude. This, this kind of an item, in my opinion, should require an overt action by the council, separate from being bundled into really a CIP, which we're expected to approve this evening. So I do have concerns about the genesis of this, and the fact that this appears to be getting far ahead of council. The question I'd have to answer to some constituents is, how is policy being made here? Is the council involved in setting such a policy as this? This would be the first very small step of a, of a large undertaking.
Mayor, if I could just respond to that, we certainly, we try to respect the work of the advisory committee and the ERM C. And in some conversation with CIRC, this certainly does not indicate any policy direction. It's just the, if you want us to explore this, this, this gets it on the, on the books. And we recognize that there's some investment in investigating this. We certainly, there would be no contract or funding left for this, even to investigate the idea prior to coming back to council to see if you were at all interested in pursuing this. So we could, but we were trying to honor the, the work of the committee and their request for this. And, but we could, it's pleasure of the council tonight, or if you'd like to end the conversation at this point.
Yeah, I would just say my, my, my hope for that line item is that it's taken out of this budget tonight and that it be brought back as a separate item where we can talk about the issue and decide if we want to study it more. That's just my opinion.
And again, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to clarify, at the study session, I, I had hoped that there'd be a little bit more discussion about it because there was never an intention on staff's part to imply any sort of direction for council in terms of this type of magnitude of acquisition and on, on term, ongoing maintenance. Again, as the city manager said, it was based on the request from the ERM C to do that. We felt it was necessary to do that. And you'll note that based on the size of it, most of the projects we talk about are quite a bit larger than this. And the reason that it is here is because I did feel it was a significant item the council would want to look at and perhaps discuss before we actually incorporate it into the budget. Again, this is totally council's decision as to whether you want to include any of these objects, or any of these recommendations.
Thank you.
Next is parts of recreation, I'll be the guy that, you can sit there, you're going, I'll just hit the little button when you're ready.
Okay. Evening, Mayor, members of the council, you can go carry on.